Welcome back, everyone. We're going to call the meeting of the Scarborough Town Council back to session. Just for the public, we have already actually opened up the meeting and went into executive session to talk about a contract zone negotiations. And so, we are back. So with that, I'm moving on to item number four on the agenda for general public comments. If anybody would like to get up and speak, you may do so for three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda.
Good evening. My name is G. Marie Catarina, 311 Gorham Road. Seems really funny to be on this side of this, but that's okay. I just wanted to speak. I know it's on the agenda as a resolution, but to put out there that I hope that all of you support the resolution to follow through with that Gorham East-West corridor. I have lived on 114 since 1988, and I have seen the traffic problems increase year after year after year. In fact, I was involved with PACS back in the early nineteen, nineteen, yeah, that's a long time ago, nineteen nineties, on this particular issue. And I was very pleased to see that finally, hopefully, we will get some funding perhaps from the Main Turbike Authority and take off the traffic off from roads that were never built or never crafted in such a way to handle the amount of traffic that goes by. Just as an, excuse me, as an example, it takes me five minutes sometimes to even get out of my driveway if it's certain points of the day. And I know from my husband, having been formerly captain at Inchen Five, for him to get from my house up to Inchen Five to go on calls at, in the evenings, or heading, you know, in that direction towards Gorham, it was dangerous. So, anyway, so I appreciate any support you guys give to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, March the Scientist, 54 Beechridge Road. I'm the Chair of the Scarborough Housing Alliance, and at our February meeting, the Scarborough Housing Alliance came up with a, I don't know, we'll call it guidance statement for the council on how we feel about certain affordable housing units. And then, when I'm done reading this, I'll give it to Tody so you can have it for the record. The committee's strong preference is to locate affordable housing units integrated into the development project. We believe a minimum of 10% would be appropriate, given the proximity of the crossroads zone, which has an inclusionary zoning requirement of 10%. However, should the council choose to accept the in lieu fee, the committee believes that the funds could be used to partner with an affordable housing developer and produce other affordable housing, which obviously is our goal. So, that was our statement.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, we'll close the general public comments, moving on to item number five. Minutes from February 15, 2017, regular meeting. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second? And second, thank you. Any corrections, edits for the clerk? Not seeing any, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Adjustments to the agenda? I do have one adjustment to the agenda. We will move or continue order number 17-018, act on the request for an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRS A405.6C regarding economic development relating to the Eighth Amendment to the Contract Zone, Number Nine, by the residents at Gateway Commons. It was the subject of our first executive session, and we'll be continuing that following council member comments. We will actually come back to session only for the purposes of adjournment after the conclusion of that meeting. Moving on, items to be signed, I'll sign the treasurers warrants as we go through the agenda. Resolution, 17-001, act on a resolution, 17-001, to follow through with the Transportation and Land Use Action Plans for the Gorham East-West Corridor, authorize the town manager to sign the resolve. I'd like to, before public comment, I'd like to turn it over to the manager for an explanation.
This is the subject of a workshop at your last council meeting, two weeks ago. Members, representatives from the Main Turbike Authority had occasion to sit with you and provide some of the history. This project, as was mentioned from the podium, has been in the works for many, many years. And at this point, they're looking to kind of breathe some new life back into the project. And the Main Turbike Authority has expressed a willingness to take a leadership position in this regard. Until recently, Main DOT was kind of a partner in terms of who would take the lead. So much of this legislative session, there was a bill that will provide further mandate to the MTA, so they can actually have some confidence that they could explore this and ultimately build it. What's before you this evening is a resolution that truly provides support to that effort, and I'm sure that it will be successful this evening. I suspect I will attend one of the hearings in Augusta when the bill comes up, and offer this resolution and maybe some comments in support of the bill. Four other communities, those being South Portland, Gorham, Westbrook, and Scarborough, are asked to sign this. We've been identified as the four communities that stand to benefit the most, or you could also say impacted the most right now with the current conditions, including the Portland area comprehensive transportation system, PACS, is also a very strong partner agency in this effort. So again, this just is a sentiment of support for this next step of the process.
With that, I'd like to open up a public comment. Anybody that would like to get up and speak on the item? One, twice? Not seeing any, close public comments. And what is the will of the council?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Any comments? Counselor Donovan?
Yeah, I strongly support this. This could be the most important transportation initiative that's undertaken in the years to come. That section of Scarborough is tremendously impacted, as anybody who's driven Gorham Road knows, or 22 Scarborough Street. So, this is vitally important. It's, the MTA is offering a financing mechanism to get this done, and that is always the problem when you're talking about a large-scale solution and a large-scale project.
Other comments, Counselor Kiazmer? So, as the liaison to the PACS group, this has been discussed quite heavily with that group as well. I think it's certainly a regional opportunity. Bear in mind, this is a process that could take five to 10 years. So this is the super, really, really preliminary, basically just authorization saying, conceptually, we think it's good to start exploring it. But this is a long way off, and this is a step one of probably dozens or more steps that will need continued council approval. So this isn't a quick one-stop-and-done type of thing. This is just very preliminary begins of process, for sure.
Home to St. Clair?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I can't imagine not supporting this. It's desperately needed, and it's going to help provide a solution to so many problems down there. And so, I'm in complete favor of this.
Uncle Rose?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment about the presentation we got at the workshop. I thought it was very informative. And I also used to drive my dog off my tamping on County Road, which is wonderful, but it meant that I was driving at rush hour in absolutely the wrong direction through that area. I mean, it's brutal. And this is needed, and I think that there are individuals that are going to be highly impacted negatively, but I think overall, it's pretty important to choose that we need to move forward. And I think this resolution is really going to be helpful.
Counselor Foley?
I would, I totally support and agree. I mean, we have clients who, when they want to start looking in Scarborough, they'll draw a map and say, "Don't, I don't, I won't, don't even show me a house over there because of the traffic." And so, it's needed, it's bad.
Thank you. Again, also in support, I don't remember the date for some reason, but when we did have that workshop, I would recommend anybody to go online and take a look at that workshop, because the presentation by Peter Mills and the MTA was absolutely wonderful and astounding. And you get to see, in generalities, what we're really discussing, and that is a new corridor, a new pathway between really the South Portland Main Mall exit through the one, Running Hill Road, 114, out to Gorham. The number-one slide in that isn't really where it's going, but really the traffic congestion, the quality of traffic control, and the intersections, which are primarily failing at this time. And this solution brings them up to, very few move to an A rating, it's an A through F, but most of them are, will be at least at a C rating, which is pretty significant. And so, this is a great, this is a regional solution to, or a state solution to a regional problem that cannot be funded locally. So I think that this is something that we need to support, and it's nice to hear. I'm pretty certain that the other communities have supported and signed on, so I appreciate that this looks like it probably will be unanimous. So with that, I would move to question, and all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Order number 17-014, it's a seven o'clock public hearing and possible second reading of proposed amendments, Chapter 601, the Town of Scarborough Traffic Ordinance, Section 25, Parking Restrictions, Subsection A, Point Four, Roman numeral four, dash one, Pine Point. I would like to, before public comments, turn it over to Counselor Donovan as Chair of the ordinance for an overview.
This is a project that runs from Snowcanning Road to East Grand Avenue. It has parking on the south side of the street. It was reviewed carefully by the Town Engineer, Angela Blanchett, with the ordinance committee, and it was unanimously endorsed by the ordinance committee for adoption.
Excellent, thank you. And with that, before turning it over to the manager, I would actually like to open up for public comment. Would anybody like to speak about the ordinance? Go ahead.
I would. Hi, good evening. My name's Mo Erickson. I don't want the parking. I think you know that already. But I feel like, oh, I feel like in this town, nobody ever listens to me. I wish, I wish you guys would. Trust me, it's a mistake. It's a plain and simple mistake. And I feel like, just because you have this little windfall of money, or from the DOT is going to come and help, you know, beautify this area, just because you have it doesn't mean it's right, doesn't mean you should spend it on this. I really feel like this is a huge mistake. There should be no parking on the Pine Point Road. Parking only started there three years ago. Up until that point, nobody ever, ever, ever parked there, unless it was for my wedding at St. Jude's because of the incredible overflow, but nobody ever parked there, and they did fine. And there was never an issue. There was still plenty of parking spaces at the beach. I just, I really feel like because the town has this little bit of money, or it's kind of like the tooth fairy came down, and, hey, we can do this and beautify this area, that you're just being blinded by the practicality of it all, and you should not do it. I know that a couple of weeks ago, somebody mentioned how now that the new bridge is there, at, when you're going from the very start of that new bridge down, it looks like almost gives, or you're coming up towards the new bridge from the Clambake, you get this sort of highway feel. And as I was running today at five o'clock in the dark across that bridge, I thought, well, sure, you have this highway feel, because there's no sidewalk on the bridge. So then I thought, what a perfect solution. Take this money that you're allocating for all this beautification of nowhere land and make parking spaces, put a sidewalk on the bridge. I mean, they had a temporary sidewalk on the bridge when they were building the real bridge. They felt it was that important to have a sidewalk on that bridge that they built a temporary one. And now that we've got the beautiful bridge, still no sidewalk. So that's what I'm begging the council to do. Take that money and build a sidewalk, and don't allow parking on the Pine Point Road. Think about putting parking on Depot Road in the cor, around the curve. You're still going to get the same amount of parking spaces, and you wouldn't be bothering anybody if you allowed parking 12 or 15 parking spaces in when you first turn on Depot Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. Anybody else? Not seeing any, I would turn it over to the manager for an overview and any staff presentations.
I see the Town Engineer here. I believe she provided a full presentation here last meeting. We're prepared to do it again if you would like that, for the council's benefit or for the public. So I guess I look to the council if you think that would be helpful.
We were having technical difficulties, so I can, I was just going to give an over, really quick overview, because I think Counselor Donovan did a good job with that pretty much already. I just wanted to clarify, what's in front of the council tonight is just prohibiting parking on that northeast side of Pine Point Road, from Snowcanning down to East Grand Avenue. So it's an amendment to the traffic ordinance, Chapter 601. So, and like you said, mentioned in other meetings, the Transportation Committee has spent over a year looking at this and designing a complete streets design in preparation for that DOT project coming, and looking at that as an opportunity and a way to enhance this area. And it includes the designated parking spaces. It's really an allocation of what they're now for a footprint in that right-of-way, and having a space, adequate amount of space to provide on-street parking. And because of that, it limits it to one side of Pine Point Road. It also incorporates bike lanes and resurfacing of that existing sidewalk, and some traffic calming measures. And I can answer any questions as we go through that you'd like.
Any technical questions for staff? Well, Angela's with us. Not seeing any, thank you very much. And to begin discussion, is there a motion from the, from the council?
So moved.
Second? And discussion, comments, questions? Counselor Kiazmer?
So, I attended the first transportation meeting this week. It was Tuesday night, last night, I believe it was, or I'll meld them together. And was reiterated yet again that their support for this project, I think it's a good opportunity to utilize the investments that we're getting from DOT, and safety is being the foremost concern here. I don't think it's prudent for us to continue to allow the situation as it stands now. I don't think it's a, it's a safe issue, and Transportation certainly supported that and recommends moving forward.
Mr. Donovan?
Just to recall the context, we had the Clambake arguing that no parking restrictions whatsoever should be made. Others appearing both before the ordinance committee and before the Transportation Committee, arguing for the elimination of all parking in that area. This is a compromise. I do support it. I also think that we should expect the Planning Department, the Town Engineer, the Transportation Committee to be looking at roadway design issues beyond this. And I'm talking about from the bridge to the point at which this project ends, as to what's an intelligent way to treat with that space, because that space is not affected whatsoever by what we're, we have before us tonight.
Counselor Foley?
So I will say, I've heard, yeah, if we do, I think this is a very good compromise. If we do nothing, we're going to have way more parking than we should. As has been pointed out, it's really extremely dangerous. I would totally agree. I still don't understand, and I think we, something we should look at is why the pedestrian bridge was not part of that bridge project, and that would be something I would love to look at somewhere down the road. I don't, it's not a part of this, but that's a very good point. And we do listen, because I know you want to pull, and I want to pull too, and that's going to happen someday. But I really support this project. I think it's been, the presentations have been well done, the information's been well done, and I have received some anecdotal, you know, pieces from people who think it's a pretty fair compromise.
Counselor Kiazmer?
Yes, so I did want to also kind of reiterate something that was brought up at the last session, and in Transportation as well. The reason that it doesn't continue while it's up to the bridge is because, to Ms. Erickson's point, there is no sidewalk there, and this project, the current DOT project is from this point forward. So it's not that we're ignoring that section. It's something that certainly can and probably should be addressed, and will be addressed in the future. It's just this opportunity for this project right here kind of puts us in this scope of supply from where we're going now, all the way through to in essence, the road down there.
Other council comments? I did, just for the public, in case they didn't see, I did want to, there's only, it's actually one sentence that's being added, so just as a highlight, it's item number three in the ordinance, Chapter 601, it says, "No parking shall be allowed on Pine Point Road from East Grand Avenue to Snowcanning Road, except for within the delineated on-street parking spaces on the southwestly side of the road." So that is the only change that's happening. You know, I support this. I think that Ms. Erickson's comments around the design will be taken into consideration now that staff understands what some additional needs are with that, that whole concept and how this is rolling out. I know that they'll be responsive, so I totally support this. I think that is a great compromise. Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Under Old Business, Order Number, let me try to do this right, yeah, Order Number 17-019, Act to Approve the Names Posted to the Various Committees and Boards, as recommended by the Appointments Committee on February 15, 2017. If I can refer this, I believe to the Chair of the Appointments Committee, Counselor Kiazmer?
Yeah, this was the announcements that were made at the last meeting, the recommendations for appointments. This is just part of the process to formally accept them and allow notification to go out that they, that they have been adjusted.
Thank you. Any public comment? Anybody? Not seeing any, is there a motion from the floor?
So moved.
Second? Any comments or questions? Not seeing any, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to New Business, Order Number 17-020, Act on the Request to Authorize the Town Manager to Sign a Memorandum of Understanding with Manomet, hopefully I pronounced that right, for a grant for commercial-scale soft-shell clam farming. And I'd like to first turn this to Counselor Hayes for an overview as our liaison to Shellfish.
Yeah, I mean, this, this issue, and I am totally in support of it, actually has come our way. It really is, you know, I think as people have listened to our conversations in the past about what is the health of our clam flats and, you know, the product that we have out there, we've talked a lot about, you know, there's predators, there's other things. We're really trying to get a handle on what is the health of it. This is really, and one of the things we've talked a lot about is the unknown issue of what are the predators, what impact they're having. This is really a professor that's doing some work around trying to protect the clam flats and actually do some sort of lease agriculture, where you take a section of the flats, you surround them by some mesh and other things that really protects them from the predators, and then see where it is. This is something that has come our way, and I noticed that David Green's in the audience, and he, it's really his, it came his way, and he's suggesting it, and I think it makes a lot of sense. There's some grant money to do a three-year study, to set up some plots that we can monitor and follow for three years, and see what impact, how the clam flats do under those controlled circumstances versus just the open flats. I really recommend, I think it's a great thing that, you know, and when we were discussing licensing this year, one of the things that the council had asked for is really trying to get some better data about what's happening on our clam flats, what's the health of our clam flats, what are some of the factors that are influencing it. So I would really support doing this. I think it's a great project. We do it for three years, and at the end of the three years, the clams become our, you know, the resource for the town, so I fully support this. And I think there's probably others in the audience that technically probably could answer questions better than I, but that's, that's sort of the gist of it.
So, thank you for the overview. What I would like to do is open up a public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak, if you can, on the podium?
Benjamin Howard, Seven Winds of Pines. I'd just like to say, I'm completely in support of this, after having sat through the licensing agreements earlier this year. I spent that entire debate trying to find some sort of leg of research, and the week prior to, to stand on, as I wasn't just going to get up and make some comments about an industry I had no idea about, where these people that make their livelihoods came in every, every day, speaking the best that they could to defend the side that they supported in that time. And what research I found, there was very little. There was some research being done similarly in Freeport, where they set up these nets, and they basically were determining how the green crabs affect the populations of clams, of the clams, just based off of, you know, even though the green crabs can't get in there, the clams have the ability to sense it. So I think this is a very valuable thing for the town to understand. I can't believe that we, you know, have waited so long to sort of find research, and that we made a decision really without any research. I'm glad that it was compromised sort of to come to the middle, but overall, I think this is a great thing, and I just want to compliment the town on proceeding with this. So thank you.
My name's Dave Green. I live at 135 Beechridge Road. I'm the Chairman of the Shellfish Committee. I would like you to know that the committee unanimously voted to take this on as a conservation project, but it's also going to be a research project. It's an extension of Dr. Beal's work with the Down East Institute of predation on the clams. So, we're going to put in a known amount of clams, and we're going to give them three years, and we're going to go in there and dig them out, and do measurements and weights and all that, and we will be able to see some of how bad the green crabs are on our sea. Because one of the things, when Chris Wagner comes down, I'm going to be talking with him tomorrow, and we're going to be setting up a time to go look at his farm in Georgetown. And we have all the support we could ever possibly want. This fell into our lap. It's an unbelievable project. They're going to give us $4,500 worth of clam seed and the netting, and they're going to come down and watch right over our shoulders and work with us to get 25 protected beds on approximately one acre of unusable flats, okay? They don't want to come down here and take the best mud that we have to dig in. They want the worst stuff. They're trying to prove the point. If we can protect these seeds from the predators, it's good digging, okay? Even though it's not right now. So I truly believe this is the future going.
I have some questions. Mr. Green, how will they, I'm curious, you said that the area is not obviously the best area to dig. How are we, how will you protect it? Because we haven't been able to protect any of the other areas from the worms. How will they keep that area safe?
From the worms?
Yeah.
We're not.
Okay. I was just curious. I didn't know if that was part of what they were going to do.
Unfortunately, it is not. He took, the first step was the green crabs.
Yeah.
And that obviously is the problem with the sea. The worms come into play on...
Once they're bigger. Once they're bigger, right?
Inch and a half, two-inch, almost harvestable clams at that point. Uh, I was contacted, I, I have a lady I'll be talking with tomorrow, um, at the Shellfish Forum up in Rockland. And she is doing a study, first person that's ever contacted anybody, about milky ribbon worms. Uh, a true, she's gonna do some data and see. So we're looking forward to having some help with our predators. This is a giant step here at no expense to the town, other than we're gonna, you know, the harvesters will be putting in conservation time to make this work.
It's nice to see the excitement, you know?
I'm, I'm excited. I'm telling you.
It's been a rough year for your committee and I just feel like this might be what it takes to bring everybody back to the table and have a real positive environment and something for you all to kind of connect, reconnect with. So I'm really excited for all of you.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're, we're happy.
Good. I'm glad. Thanks to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Anderson, Marine Restore Office. Unanimous support so far. I'm happy to hear. I'm very much in favor of the project. Again, it came up through our last conversation, the lack of data and what data we could pull. Might have been from other towns, it's from other areas, hard to relate it to our town. It's an opportunity that I think would be a shame to pass up. In addition to all that, good stuff that's going on, we'll be, both the diggers and myself, will be hands-on with the project. Learning the research method, this scientific method involved. And hopefully will allow us to continue that after our, our research here. So, not much else to say that hasn't been said, but just that I'm very much in support of the project.
Thank you very much.
Sean, questions?
Yes, sorry for the, for Officer Anderson.
Do we have an idea of where exactly this is gonna be located?
No, we haven't started yet. They come down beforehand and do a number of site visits and we get together as a committee and, uh, and invite other diggers that are not in the committee as well to go on these site visits and really take a place like they said that is in optimal territory right now. Like you said, they really don't want the areas that are good to harvest now. They want to be able to prove that this protection is what, what matters.
But it is gonna be one acre of contiguous farming?
Yes, that's the plan, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, three hundred acres, give or take of
Yes, yeah, that's a safe estimation.
Yeah. I have a few follow-ups too, actually, sorry. Um, are there still gonna be other efforts to survey the cl- the flats?
Yes, we will still have the, the traditional surveys that we were, were planning on already.
On the main harvest areas?
On the main harvest areas in addition to, to this research. So which will provide us an extra level of, of data comparing one to the other, so.
All right. Um, and then the last question I had is going through the MOU.
Sure.
It says you have to designate a harvester and that that harvester basically gets the revenue from the commercial clams that are sold out. How are you gonna determine that or how's that?
That is, uh, that's one issue that's being looked at through them. They have in the past only done it through one harvester. Um, they're looking at doing it as the committee and the town as that designated harvester, so to speak. That's something that is new to them as well and so we'll be working with the M R to figure that, that issue out.
So maybe we could have clams at Summerfest?
Just on that point, uh, in my conversations with Commander Matt, uh, as, as Ian just said, uh, all other existing relationships are with individual harvesters. They were very interested and excited to hear a town that we've been interested in sponsoring. So I think we'll see some slight language changes, uh, recognizing kind of the, the different setup. But I think this approach is really far superior. It's, uh, as was mentioned, it's an opportunity for the commission to kind of rally around something that everyone seems interested in, sees value in, and it's really about scientific method and data.
I agree.
And we can accomplish those. And I'm very pleased it's a great opportunity for Ian to kind of rise up and, and into a leadership position. He's still relatively new to the town, but it's a great opportunity for him to step up.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much, officer. Um, pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Any comments from council? Yes, ma'am.
It just seems like it, it addresses that issue of data. And whenever you can use data to form decisions, you're often in a better place, so.
Anything else? Not seeing any? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Order number seventeen dash oh twenty-one, act on the request from the SEDCO, uh, our Skyrow Economic Development Corporation's board to move approval on the appointments of Alan Paul and James Hartley, with terms to expire in two thousand and twenty, and the reappointments of Dr. Gail Brazo and John Krasnick, with terms to expire in two thousand and twenty, and Rick Chaney with the term to expire in two thousand and nineteen. And is there any public comment? Not seeing any? And a pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Second, excellent. Comments for the board? Any comments? Um, I would like to say, and I hope I didn't, I, um, Dr. Gail, I always, I always pronounce that name wrong, but I do want to say, um, you know, thank you very much to everyone who serves on our boards, especially this board. There's a lot of activity that's going on and, um, it's nice to see Mr. Paul back. He used to be on our planning board for many years as well. Um, so I really want to say thank you for those who stay on and reassigned or signed back up and the new people as well. Did you have your comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that this didn't come through appointments only because SEDCO is, is kind of a quasi-town group. So it doesn't fall under the purview of appointments per se. Um, but certainly support them, you know, overseeing who, who they think is best qualified and, and would support it a hundred percent.
Any other comments? Not seeing any? All in favor? And that is unanimous. Order number seventeen dash zero twenty-two, act on, act to certify the election results of the special municipal election held on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen. If the clerk would like to, um, Any public comment? Not seeing any? Is there a pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second. Comments? Mr. Kiyazam?
Stellar turnout. Absolutely stellar turnout. Uh, I'm not quite sure how to take that, really. Um, you know, I, I, hopefully we, we get, you know, maybe we just didn't do a good job of outreach or, or what. But, um, I know it's always tough with only one candidate on the ballot, but, um, a hundred ninety is, uh, somebody did a quick count, point zero, zero, one percent or point zero, one percent of the vote. All I can say is you, you get the government you deserve and I'll leave it at that.
So Dennis?
Yeah, really congratulations to Mary Stark. She's a fine person and she'll do an excellent job.
Any other comments? Um, I would like to welcome her to the chaos. Um, she's, having served on the school board, um, she's got a lot of work ahead of her and she's gonna enjoy it. She's a wonderful person, so, uh, congratulations to her. Any election won is an election won, um, no matter what the turnout is. So I do appreciate all the people that did come out and also for the staff that really manned a very slow response. But thank you to Toby's staff as well. Any other comments? Not seeing any? All in favor? And that is unanimous. Next item is order number seventeen dash zero twenty-three, act on the annual seasonal road postings for weight restrictions, if necessary, from February twenty-seventh to May fifteenth. This was submitted by the Director of Public Works. I'd like to turn it over for an overview just from Tom.
Annual red of passage. The good news is spring's around the corner. I think we can all appreciate frost is coming out of the ground. And so it's, uh, it's really high time that we do both these, uh, these load restrictions. We do our best to work with, uh, private industry. Oftentimes if there's a cold overnight, they're able to transport in the early morning hours before the frost comes back out of the ground. But I think everyone that lives in Maine understands that this is a, a part of the process, so.
Any public comment? Not seeing any? Motion from the floor?
So moved.
Second, second. Um, I, if I can start off, I did want to read, um, this, this is the list, right? I did want to read for the record. The roads that it would be posted are Ashwamp Road, Dresser Road, Highland Avenue, Holmes Road, Jasper Street, Ross Road, Sawyer Road, Two Rod Road, Woodfield Drive, Chamberlain Road to the South Portland Line, Beechridge Speedway to the Saco Line and Payne Road to Holmes Road. Right?
Yes.
Um, any comments from council? Again, it's just a red of passes and spring is finally coming. Uh, no comment, then all in favor? And that's six. I'm sorry, that's your name, it's seven. I can't count tonight. Um, next item is order number seventeen dash oh twenty-four, act on the request to adopt the two thousand and seventeen Town Council goals. And Tom is working on technology. Um, well, this is gonna be, I hope, very quick, so I don't really, rather, or we have something to hand out. My big head in the way. Can you see it okay? All right, thank you. So, um, just as a high-level review for you, um, I can't see behind me, so I can't really, oh, here we go. Town council every year goes through a goal-setting process. Um, over the years, we've done different approaches. Last year's, last year's, sorry, I heard that, I wasn't sure. Um, last year's approach, um, took us in a more formal direction in which we had a consultant come in that was called, um, Delphi Group. Um, they came in and facilitated our goal-setting process in which we set out and identified three primary goals. You'll see, uh, for those who keep track, there's some consistencies with this year's goals that were set last year. Um, however, the process that we undertook this year was that we said as part of our maturing as a council and in our relationships as, um, as, you know, the stewards for the town is that we decided to manage that process by ourselves this year. And we held a workshop, um, in which we sat down and went over last year's goals and assessed how we, um, what our outcomes were and if we were successful, which we were, um, pretty successful. And then we began the process of identifying what will our new goals be and then what are the metrics that we want to use. And so what I'm presenting tonight is really the synthesization of those inputs that I received from each of you. Understanding that there's some, um, I tried to balance the editorializing and tried to, um, put this in using everyone's voice while I was typing and trying to include that. Um, the format is fairly simple. So, thanks. Um, in keeping with last year's strategy, I really kind of was able to take all of our pieces and synthesize this into three primary goals or at least goal statements. Uh, those statements, two of them are a continuation from last year and there is a new, uh, item. Um, and really, while last year there were three, two of them dealt with communications and this year we put them into one category while still looking at the two emphasis. Um, we'll talk about that in a little bit. So our very first goal statement will be to continue to improve our communications. The second is to further enhance financial management practices. And the third is to focus efforts to improve the governance of the town council. Um, with that, and the next three slides are really, um, the breakdown of each of those core concepts in which we then, I tried to write a descriptor around the outcome and actions, um, using some generalities because we're all unique, we're all, um, verbal and sometimes we're both. So I was trying to narrow that down into a, um, you know, a statement. And then, um, metrics and a lot of everyone's goals are really metrics that we want to use to determine where we're successful in communicating. So, um, in our very first one here, um, the, um, the core concept is to continue to improve internal and external communications. Again, that's the combination of two goals from last year. Um, by developing a town council communication plan that provides direction, policy, oversight and business decision support for all communication efforts on the, of the town council. Um, this effort is, um, specific to the town council because obviously the manager has a communication plan that we need to sync our plan up with and that will require, um, some paralysation between the, um, the staff and our town council communication plan that we come up with. And then in the last column are the success measures. Really the success measure is that we approve a communication plan or a Skyrow Town Council Communication Plan. There were several, uh, recommendations about individualized metrics that can be included in that that need to be worked out. Um, we have formed, we've already begun this process. We have formed a communication committee, um, a new standing committee that we are formalizing. And it will be that responsibility through Counselor St. Clair's leadership to develop that plan and to include the metrics that have been shared and we have the supporting documents. There were a lot of individualized metrics. So as an example, um, that's not included here, um, there were recommendations that every town council meet with each other at least once quarterly. So from an enterprise or from a global perspective, um, that's not included in our statement, but that might be one that is brought up as a protocol within the communication plan that talks about how we engage and interact with each other. Um, so what I provided here is a list of five kind of general categories within the plan that I hope brings, um, a lot of that to, um, to light, although it might not necessarily be specific. So as an example, you know, we're gonna detail the roles and responsibilities of that new committee. Um, we'll identify new strategies and resources while codifying current relationships. Um, and that's relationships with other partners, including the school board. Um, explore opportunities for community engagement by increasing transparency, listening and understanding, facilitate improvements to existing and new communication mediums such as social media, websites. There was a lot of conversations about agendas and when they're published and annual, I mean, I don't think people know, but actually our policies already state that every committee of town is supposed to give an annual report in writing, but it's really not something that we've incorporated. So it's to look at those type of, um, subtext and to bring that into compliance and determine if it goes forward or do we change it? And then guiding council leadership and council members in managing the inter-council relationships. So as an example, one of the things that we talked about, um, meeting me when I was discussing being chair, there's a lot of conversation about the chair needs to communicate weekly or at least once before the next meeting to see if I can help. So there's different standards and expectations that we'd like to codify. Um, if you're, you know, want to be chair, then here are some of the guidelines that you'll have to follow, um, based on that. Um, the next core concept is enhancing financial management. This is a continuation of last year. The three outcomes that we were looking at was to increase communications on the budget process, manage the annual budget to a reasonable, sustainable level, improve data that's available using, sorry, I can't see, I'm in color and I still can't see. Improve data availability used to inform decision-making. The metrics in each of those are a little bit more broad. So in increasing the communications, we want to develop and execute within the communication plan the standards on which we deliver our fiscal message every year. Um, we had talked about, um, the one budget, one town approach and that is kind of our clip for this year. And then also using expertise to workshop on how to understand municipal budgets was one of the other recommendations, bringing in an expert that can explain to us, um, more detail within that budget. For managing the budget on a sustainable level, it was, um, actually this is probably the only near unanimous measure that was very, very specific, although there was varying degrees up to what has been chosen. Um, but I did take, I was very specific, I took the majority. It was actually really six to one. Um, approving town-wide budget that keeps the tax rate increased to less than or around three percent using metrics that have, that have been approved by the council while including the following considerations. Review the needs for the expanded funding of the senior tax credit and review short and long-term needs to improve cable television. Keep in mind, there might be other things, these are just simply examples that were given to me as part of that task of writing this, but there might be other things to take into consideration that will go through finance. And I know Peter will, uh, make sure that finance takes a look at that through his, um, committee. And then the, the data availability is really around benchmarking quarterly trends, looking at the global, uh, long-term impact of our decisions by taking a look at history and where it's going. So it's, um, discussing, uh, distribution of quarterly trend reports, contract, uh, update growth in services study that was incorporated many, many years ago. Um, and so the approval, really the measure that we are, um, that we will measure against is that we approve standard metrics, dashboards and benchmarks and that we have a final working model by the end of this year with the components that are in it. And then the last is our core concept number three, which is focusing efforts to improve the governance of the town council. There was a lot, a lot of input on this here. There, um, there are two outcomes. Uh, the first is to evaluate council boards and committee structures that support relevant changes for today's environment. And the second is to provide focus and attention on the next comprehensive plan. That again, actually that second piece was absolutely unanimous across the That, again, actually, that second piece was absolutely unanimous across the board in wanting to be successful in writing and drafting that new comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go through each of the four recommendations on the evaluation of the board, some of them we've already begun, such as the standing committee for communications. There is... was a recommendation to create a new intercultural and diversity committee that we can look at. There's other rules and policies and things that we want to incorporate, including some strategic focus around collective bargaining, HR policies, and benefits. And then the last piece on the comprehensive plan, I think that's pretty self-evident. We need to, by law, we need to actually call for a comprehensive planning committee to be formed, and we begin that formal process in that we communicate the work that needs to be done, as well as lay out the timeline for the approval and what we would like to do as part of that. So, with that, I would like to open it up to public comments. If anybody would like to comment on that this year? No? Come on, it's so much fun. There we go.
March 54 Beechridge Road. I find it very well done. It's very organized, focused, and those are very good goals. Chris, the comprehensive plan, haven't we already started gathering people or anything? I thought there was a committee forming.
I don't believe so. From a staffing perspective, I believe it's...
Well, because it has to get done by the end of the year, right?
Kind of, sort of.
Yes, sort of.
We're well underway. Our intent is to use the Long Range Planning Committee as kind of the pivot group, and they are charged, as council's charged with that task, but they intend to draw upon the expertise of all the other existing committees in the process.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment, and the pleasure of the board.
So, moved.
Second.
Council comments, questions, amendments? Council Rowan.
I have two comments. One, I guess I was a little concerned with having the final passage by December of the town plan. I'm not sure that we're setting ourselves up for success with that framework. And then my second comment is that, in years past, we've done kind of a value statement where we have kind of expressed maybe not overarching goals and outcomes, but some of the things that we care about and think are important. And I'd like now to amend and include some of those. I have a couple drafted. That is promote and demonstrate civil discourse, promote the development of affordable housing, promote the preservation of historical buildings and objects, promote the preservation of open spaces, and promote... protect access to beach and water.
And I will accept that in the form of a motion to amend. Is that okay?
Does that mean that I have to read?
No, you do not need it.
Well, I would like to put that in the form of a...
As long as the town clerk... Okay. I think... So, what would happen is that it would actually become an additional... At the end, it will just be listed as a value statement is how I would kind of think it through as being added to this, if that's okay. Is there a second?
Second?
Questions or comments on the amendment? Yes, ma'am.
It was the same as what you said when you said your goals, all right?
Yes, I was reading my...
Okay. Yeah, no, so we've seen it. It's not that we haven't seen it. We don't need that.
Any other comments on the amendment? Yes, sir. Mr. Kalam.
So, what's the purpose of the value statement? Is it to... Is it to measure performance? Is it just a general statement?
I believe it helps provide clarity to town staff about the things which the council cares about, so that they're not spending time on things that we don't care about, and they are spending time on the things that we do care about. So, I don't believe that it's a measurable outcome necessarily in each of those, in each of those areas. But that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So, then it kind of strikes me that, I mean, if we're going to enter those into the formal goal statement, wouldn't we have kind of a discussion of group values to, you know, whether we would continue that process, or are we suggesting we just adopt what you've listed?
No, I think I was just throwing out there as a... I'm going to throw focus here.
Gotcha, okay. So, then what would the action be? Would we discuss those before we put them up there, or would we... Are you asking to include those in the goal statement? I'm just curious to know where... What the... What you're looking for.
I guess my thought was this discussion would be the outcome. If we're adopting the goal tonight, I'd like to see these included, but I guess I'm willing to have conversations about, you know, what you care about. I'm a flexible guy. I'm eager to believe.
But the effect of the motion would be to adopt them and make them part of the statement.
But if you want to change it, be my guest.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thing is, I don't necessarily object to those values, of course, but I'd like to see some discussion like we had in the work groups, basically, of kind of batting some ideas around of, you know, maybe keeping something as succinct, you know, to a few, or, you know, something that we can... Not saying that those aren't the right ones, and I don't necessarily disagree with those values, but something that we can kind of coalesce around and decide, yes, we're a hundred percent, as seven individuals convinced, that that's what we need for our value statement.
Fair enough. I did bear in mind that...
No, I know, I know.
Council Foley.
Well, I love all those values, but I'm a little bit worried in the same place where Chris is. I'm just not sure how it fits in in terms of adopting, and I felt like it would have been beneficial to that. We never... Our workshop was intended to do more discussion around the goal piece, and we were spending so much time on last year that we didn't always... We didn't get into the meat of being able to bat those values around as Chris was suggesting. And that was really my only observation or feedback, was just that I would hope that next year, I would encourage us to, when we go back to look in the year-end review and review these goals, do it with this council. And then if there's change after elections, that they can start that conversation differently going forward, because there are councillors that things get to weigh in, and how did we perform?
Sure.
So, that's all. But I... I'm flexible, too. That didn't help at all.
So, maybe as a solution to the... I don't want to call it an impasse, but to... Is to maybe suggest that we actually withdraw the amendment, and then we can work on a value statement that we can, kind of like how we found here, and bring that value statement back to the council.
Separately.
Separately. Would that...
Because I think we'd all like to... Yeah. I guess I'd be okay with that.
If you'd like to withdraw, and if Council St. Clair would second to the withdrawal, I believe she seconded it. You okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, as long as we bring it back.
Absolutely. I'll make sure.
Great.
So, back to the main motion on accepting the goals. Any comments around the goals? Council Donovan?
I think the Chair did a really good job organizing what is... Was hard to pull together, and so I find much of what's up there easy to support.
Great. Anything else? Great.
Can we have a discussion about the December deadline?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, actually, that's a good point, because I did actually write a note. So, I would ask the manager what he might recommend, given past experience in companies like that, because you were here for the last one, right?
No, but we've actually selected a consultant and have a pretty good idea. It's going to be well into next spring. It's going to be closer to this time next year, I think, before we're kind of fully wrapped up. So, the councillor's point's well taken. You're not likely to be able to accomplish that just by virtue of other forces, frankly.
So, I would recommend, with that, I would actually recommend...
Would you like an amendment?
I was just going to ask. I would actually move to amend the motion to eliminate and have final passage by December two thousand and seventeen. So, the goal metrics is to develop a formal plan for the town council to manage information and work to be completed.
I have these dates.
Well, it's an annual goal, so the date's already inclusive within the goal structure itself.
Potentially a period here.
Yeah, or you could say by December. Take out and have final passage. And just keep in mind, it's a formal plan.
Right.
It's not the actual... It's a formal plan of the comprehensive plan. It's not...
I guess, again, considering the handwork to be completed, I feel like there's going to be work to be completed.
Okay. So, how about if we have just develop a formal plan for the town council to manage information by December two thousand and seventeen?
Yeah.
All right. That was in the form of amended motion.
Second.
Conversation?
I agree with that.
Nothing else? Great. All in favor of the amendments? That's unanimous. Back to the main motion. Any other amendments or anything that you'd like to see changed? Not seeing any, all in favor? That's unanimous. I'm sorry, no.
Well, I was just going to say that's right. I didn't vote the last time either.
I apologize.
That's okay. Can we recap exactly what... What the change was?
Sure. The change is in the second action or outcome is to change the language to develop a formal plan for town council to manage information by December two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. We're just taking out work to do in the final passage. Okay. Fine. Bushy. It's good.
Okay. So, would you like to... So, all in favor of the amendment? Just make sure. I apologize for not... My peripheral. All in favor of the amendment as it was read, if we could re-vote? And that is unanimous. Now, back to the main motion as amended. Any other comments or questions on that total output? No? All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
And...
The next... There are no non-action items, standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. Council Donovan.
Planning Board meeting last week, the Divine Capital proposal out on Payne Road was unanimously approved for preliminary approval. The Enterprise project, Commercial Place, was back on the agenda for the first time since October. They were requesting clarification on the sixty-forty ratio of commercial to residential and how that was to be interpreted. The Divine Capital project's ready to come back to us, which is why we had a executive session today. The ordinance committees meeting tomorrow, and we're going to be looking at the fireworks ordinance amendments that are... We talked about it at the last meeting. And we're going to be looking at Good Neighbor ordinance concepts. We have a noise ordinance. We do not have an intrusive lighting ordinance, which we're going to talk about. And we do not have a derelict properties. And of course, we've had problems with some derelict properties. So, those two... We're also going to be looking at temporary signs, not signs that the building and planning department would approve, but these would be the kind of signs that you're going to hold a yard sale, if you want to support somebody for candidacy and things of that nature. And I've been working with Larissa Crockett, and she will be helping us unravel the Supreme Court decision that caused us to need to evaluate this more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rowan.
SECO met... See what you hear? And the discussion was centered around the upcoming budget priorities for two thousand and seventeen. There was one item that was particularly discussed, and that was that there was a sentiment that perhaps the money that inside of the SECO budget around marketing might be a little bit low, since it believes that is the only money that Scarborough is using to promote itself. And so, I believe that further discussions are going to be made there with management. Housing Lines also met. I think you heard our statement. We also discussed goal setting, or excuse me, we recapped our goal setting from the prior meeting. One of the goals that we discussed was to update the Mayberry Report, which was commissioned as part of the most recent comprehensive plan update back in two thousand and five. And it was a needs assessment for affordable housing in town. And the committee asked Tom to work with Dan to put together an RFP. There is some money in affordable housing reserves that is available and can be used for that purpose, but it would obviously come back to this body with a recommendation to... Before a sponsor's spent. But the thought is that as part of the comprehensive plan updated, it would be nice to have an updated need study for affordable housing, so that, again, it'll inform that plan. And then lastly, there was a discussion around an attitude annual survey that was done as part of, again, part of the comprehensive plan last time, and that committee would like to be included. I think that's a good idea, we'd like to be included when that comprehensive annual survey is put together.
Thank you. Council Foley.
Well, due to Election Day, we rescheduled rules and policy, so we will meet next week. Wanting to be mindful of our wonderful town clerk and all of her busy work. Communications met, but I'm going to let Council St. Clair speak to that. And both of my liaison committees met while I was in Las Vegas, so I'll catch up next month.
Thank you. Council St. Clair.
So, Communications met for the first time, and we actually covered a lot, like a lot of lot, probably too much that any of you want me to get into tonight, because I could just go through all this. But I think that the biggest thing that we talked about, one thing I did was I met with Larissa before the meeting. One of the... One of the goals I had for that first meeting was we don't want to duplicate anything that staff is already doing, because the things that they're putting out externally, they're doing very well. The newsletter, the Facebook page, those types of things. So, we met with her, and she kind of did a great breakdown of who does what, and we talked about how the council can contribute to the leader and the newsletter. So, we're going to kind of talk about some of that stuff. We're going to hopefully start doing... I just actually met with some of the people from the public cable. We're going to start doing some TSAs for... That will be aired, hopefully, we're fingers crossed, maybe every other Friday. And we're going to talk a wide range of topics, including like public safety, parking, summer activities, special events. We actually are going to go to some locations in town. We will cover some of the historical areas in town, things like that. So, we're going to get out in town and hopefully air those segments, which is kind of an exciting thing. And the great thing was the TV people were really excited about it, so that was kind of fun. We talked about partnering with any of the, like, local events. So, any of the things that are going on in town, you know, like Winter Fest, things like that, and always making sure that we have a council booth there that can have pamphlets for everything that we have going on in town, and also quick surveys, so that we hit some demographics that maybe we don't always hit all the time. Staff... Oh, we talked about making sure that potentially either monthly or quarterly, we're picking a person, a volunteer or staff member of the quarter, and recognizing them for what they do. We have so many volunteers that really give up a lot of their time, and they're really the kind of the unsung heroes of this town. I mean, there's so many volunteers that have been volunteering for a really long time, and they... Not that they want recognition, but I think some of them deserve a little bit of recognition. And so, we talked a little bit about that. We talked about meeting with SECO quarterly and just kind of tucking in with them and making sure we know what's going on. We talked about how there always should be, and this is something we've discussed in the past, but something that we really want to hit hard on, there should always, always, always be a council member at every opening of a business in this town. If the Chair can't be there, if the Vice Chair can't be there, there's seven of us. There's no reason why a council member cannot be... One of us cannot be at every opening of every business in this town. There's just no excuse for that, in my opinion. We talked about... Shaun was really instrumental in writing, you know, kind of what our... What our... Having a break, Graham. What our charge is going to be. We're going to review that at our next meeting, which is actually next week. And we're going to send that to rules and policy for them to review, and then it will come to council for you all to take a look at. Oh, March twenty-second at six P.M., the Communications Committee is actually going to hold a community roundtable. We're going to just do it once, try it once, and talk about some of the things that are going on in the community, and we'll see. We'll see if it works out well for us. It might be something that we continue. If it's a total bust, it might be something that we don't. But we're... The Communications Committee is excited about it. Obviously, any councillor is welcome to, again. We have booked this space. It will be on TV. We've talked with... TV, we've talked with Tony about that. It is going to be a roundtable, we're just going to sit at the table with the residents and the citizens, and no major expectations, except that we just feel like sometimes, you know, getting up and speaking at a podium is hard for people, and intimidating, and so we just want to create more relaxed environments for those people that might not want to do that. So, like I said, it's, we're just going to try it. Our goal is to meet the first Thursday of every month at 3 o'clock, that falls right before the ordinance meetings, so that number one keeps us to an hour, and two allows, if anybody, obviously, all our meetings are open to the public, anyone is welcome to join us, anybody that has feedback, you know, this is a brand new committee, and we have a lot of topics to cover and a lot of things to discuss, and this is a phased committee, so there's no way we're going to get to everything that we need to. I don't anticipate that this will be, we'll be able to tackle every single communication item that needs to be tackled externally and internally this year. So this is a phased project, and that's something the chair and I have kind of discussed, that there's just, it would be impossible for us to be able to do that. So, yeah, so our next meeting is next Thursday, we're doing that because we had a scheduling conflict for this for tomorrow, and then we switch to the first Thursday of every month. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Council Hayes? Just a couple of quick updates. I actually, I think last week on vacation, I kind of, the seniors advisory board met on Tuesday, the 21st, and what we talked about, actually, they, you know, what they shared, which is great, they actually sent a thank you note to Martin's point for the community space that they're using, they actually are there five days a week now, they have selected activities every day, it's working out really well. Mondays, they do bingo, Tuesdays, they do activity center, Wednesdays is a senior lunch, Thursdays, they do a wellness series, and Friday, again, is senior activity center. So it's working out really well, they've been very gracious, and that was sort of an update for that. Both finance committee meetings, both the town council finance committee meeting, and the joint committee, school and board of education and town council, we had some weather cancellations earlier in February, but tomorrow at 2:00 PM, the joint committee is meeting, and then on Monday night at 6:00, the Scarborough Town Council Finance Committee is meeting. So those are just my updates for now. Thank you.
Here, Council Kiazmer.
So appointments met prior to this main council meeting, we had three applications for different, various committees, we decided to table those because of the, the new procedure that we're trying to implement on appointments of allowing the chairs, notifying the chairs of each committee before we post the individuals to allow them an opportunity for feedback. So we're tabling those three, if you will, for the next, till the next session. That brings us to, out of 18 committees and appointments overseen by this committee, all are full with the following exceptions, forbid, four committees. Board of Assessment Review has opportunities for volunteers, Coastal Waters and Harbor Advisory Commission, although we may be filling that in the next cycle. Senior Advisory Board has opportunities for volunteers, and Shellfish Commission as well, but those will also be approached at the next, at the next meeting as well. So we're also in the process of reviewing our charge, if you will, in terms of dealing with the, our one employee, which is the town manager. So we're having some discussions now about the review process and how we're going to possibly modify that and take that under the auspices of the, of this committee, and certainly we'll have something prepared for, probably through rules and policies or ordinance, and it will come before the council, too, for full approval before we make any of those changes, but we're in the process of discussing what that purview would be and what that process would be. Transportation met Tuesday night, we had three, three major issues, the Gorm Connector update, that was discussed, basically reviewed the presentation again from the main traffic authority. Route 1 Island CIP budget was reviewed and opportunities for improvements there, so that was, that was taken up, and will, will most likely come back in front of finance, I believe, as part of, as part of the CIP budget. And then finally, we, we did a review from MDOT of high crash locations in Scarborough. That was an interesting evaluation that, that we went through to, it pretty much showed what we knew already, but PAX goes through that process in order to evaluate potential investments for road improvements or traffic improvements, so we narrowed it down to one or two projects that we're going to push through to PAX, and hopefully look at some, some DOT funding or some, some grant funding to help defray some of the costs of improving those intersections. And that's pretty much it.
Excellent. I don't have any reports, so I'm going to turn over to the manager for his report.
Very quick, we are in the midst of budget preparation, it's about a month away from presenting it to the public and the council, certainly. This Friday is kind of the internal deadline for my senior staff to submit their department budgets, so work has been underway in earnest for better part of the month at this point. Things, well, I'll reserve judgment, I hadn't seen them all yet, but they're trickling in as we speak. Also, very busy with recruitments, we're going through a recruitment process for a community services director, have done two rounds of interviews, and actually have a third round set up. Very pleased with the caliber of the candidates, having a third round suggests that gets some good choices in front of me, and I'm just trying to make sure that I'm vetting that very thoroughly, and staff in this one to make sure the fit is right. And assessing is something that's moving through the process, Chairman Baybine will be sitting with us and our hiring team next week to actually do interviews, and we're still considering other options, including Cumberland County, and though it was reported in the paper, and I must have said it because it was in the paper, I have not totally forgotten about a shared services option, but we really wanted to demonstrate, you know, moving forward, and Matt Sturgis and I and other municipal colleagues will continue to have conversations to see where some relationship may make sense. Two other quick notes of interest, the Eco Excellence Awards will be handed out March 14th at Eco Maine. Every town in the Eco Maine family, if you will, is able to nominate a resident or group based on some activity, and we've actually nominated Stu Axelrod this year. Stu, some of you may know, among other things, professionally, he was the general manager of High Creek Waste, so it's somewhat in his, in blood, if you will, but more importantly than his professional pursuits, he was a longtime Setco volunteer. He's also been a great partner. Right now, we're doing a pilot project for organics, and Stu and his company are really, have been very supportive and our key partner, and that's just the most recent example. So we thought in his retirement year, a great opportunity to recognize his contributions. And lastly, the Community Dialogue will be held through the Scarborough School System. This is the fourth annual, it's March 9th, 5 to 8, at the Wentworth Cafeteria. So I'd certainly encourage anyone interested to come be part of that event.
Thank you. Councilmember comments? Council Kiazmer?
Real brief, I did want to congratulate Mary on her success. I was a little flippant before about the turnout, but it's always kind of a sore spot for me, I think it's, you know, it's an area where we can always improve on, but congratulations to Mary, I think she's going to be a fantastic addition to the board, and I know she's been actively participating even before that, so I think she's ready to hit the ground running, and looking forward to finally sitting at the table with her and getting some things accomplished this year.
Thank you. Council Hayes?
Yes, it's a little delayed, but just wanted to kind of give a shout out to Mike Shaw and his team at the Scarborough Public Works, they kind of, in February, we had those back-to-back-to-back storms, I'm sure those, that crew didn't get a whole lot of sleep for a couple of days, so they did a great job, and just a huge shout out and thank you for what they do do.
Council Sinclair?
I'm good.
Councilor Foley?
Everything makes sense.
Council Rowan?
And I have just a couple of items. First, I wanted to read a letter into the record, the citizen asked me to read this, and it is from Michael Turek, I, sorry for the record, I don't have his address, but he's spoken to us before to find that.
Very lame.
There you go. Michael wanted me to read, and this is a quote, "Public Works deserves kudos and recognition after the last series of snowstorms that dumped a lot of snow on Scarborough in a week. Job well done, thanks to the entire team." So I wanted to leave that for the record, if you don't mind. Wanted to also send out my thank you to Tim and Erica Downs, who previously served on the Shellfish Committee, they chose to find other opportunities and have, are no longer participating on the Shellfish and Coastal Waters, but I did want to say thank you, Mr. Downs in particular has been a long-term clam digger and has served on that committee over time, many, many years, and so I want to say thank you to the two of them for having served. Want to say thank you very much for approving the goals, it was like herding cats at times, but I do want to say thank you for the work, because it was actually eye-opening and very rewarding, so I appreciate that. And last, I wanted to send condolences and prayers and gratitude to the Andrews family. John Andrews passed away on February 20th, he was an inspiration catalyst, and catalyst for the Eastern Trail and the Eastern Trail Alliance and that local heritage of the conservation community. John had been on the Eastern Trail family for, oh gosh, probably 30 years, 40 years, the actual, the bridge that connects, I want to say South Portland to, South Portland to Scarborough?
In Saco.
Saco, sorry, that's right, Saco Trail, was named after him because of his contributions, and so just wanted to send our condolences to the family, because he was a, he lives over in the Hillcrest community that's near the Eastern Trail of all places, so I really wanted to say condolences to the family. And with that, thank you, everyone, for tonight's meeting, we do have one item, is to reconvene our executive session under order number 17-08, an act to request, sorry, an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA 405.6(c), regarding economic development relating to the eighth amendment to Contract Zone 9 by the residents at Gateway Commons Divine Capital LLC. We will convene for purposes of adjourning only at the end, and I will make sure the town clerk knows at time for our record. Everyone in favor?
Do you need a motion first?
Sure. Well, we're reconvening a previous motion, so I don't know. We already made the motion originally, so now it's just a notification, so, thank you.